Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for September 15th, 2020. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here. Item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Thank you. Counselors? Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Brennan. Further discussion on the agenda? Further discussion? Discussion? By voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. The agenda's been approved. Moving forward to consent agenda, there have been any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
Thank you very much. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second, Whiting.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as stated. Before we vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for 15 September of 2020. 4A1 approves the city council minutes for 1 September of 2020. 4A2 adopts Resolution Number R2020-TAC109, which accepts the Office of the Minnesota Secretary of State's Voting Election Equipment Grant Agreement. 4A3 adopts Resolution Number R2020-TAC107, which declares amounts to be assessed, orders the preparation of proposed assessments, and sets a public hearing date for delinquent refuse bills. 4A4 adopts Resolution Number R2020-TAC107, which declares amounts to be assessed, and excuse me because that number is not correct. That should be... Pardon me just a second here.
Mayor, is the updated number because people came in and brought their accounts up to par and were removed or updated or something like that, the latest and greatest numbers?
No, Mr., excuse me, Councilor Lehman, it's the resolution number that was wrong. And that resolution number 4A4 is Resolution Number R2020-TAC112, which declares amounts to be assessed, orders the preparation of proposed assessments, and sets a public hearing date for delinquent false alarm bills. 4A5 adopts Resolution Number R2020-TAC101, which approves, excuse me, 111, which approves the pledge of the general obligation of the City of Shakopee to reimburse Scott County for the payment of the governmental development refunding bonds for Northridge Court Project Series 2020B to be issued by the Scott County CDA and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents and connections therewith. 4B1 approves the Shakopee Youth Hockey Association's request to convert the former turf storage room at the Shakopee Ice Arena into a dryland training area at their expense. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number R2020-TAC110, an application to the Department of Natural Resources Metro Conservative Partnership Legacy Grant. 4C2 authorize, is an authorization to execute a professional services agreement with Confluence to perform design services for the Windermere Community Park in the amount of $31,500. 4D1 is a declaration of listed property as surplus and approves its proper disposal. And 4E1 authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with WSB in the amount of $62,700 to perform design and construction management services for the Quarry Lake Outlet and Erosion Project, which is Project Storm 20-TAC001.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion by voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. The consent agenda's been approved. Moving forward then to item number five. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address to the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Did we take any comments electronically, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Seeing none, then, we would move ahead to item six, which is items removed from consent. There was none. Item number seven, I'd entertain a motion to go to our EDA meeting. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to recess to the EDA meeting.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to recess to EDA. Further discussion? 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 All in favor by voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. We stand in recess. The floor is yours, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to welcome everyone to the September 15th, 2020, Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting. Please make note of the rule. First item or second item on the agenda would be approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Good.
We have a motion and a second by Brennan to approve the agenda. Any discussion? 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 All those in favor, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. Next on our agenda would be the consent business, the EDA minutes. Is there any question on the minutes? Mr. Lehman?
I was going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, approving the minutes.
A second.
A motion and a second by Brennan to approve the consent business, which is the EDA minutes. Any discussion? 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 Please take the roll.
Commissioner Lehman?
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Mars?
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. All right, now we're up to item 4A, the proposed 2021 EDA Special Benefit Levy and Budget. Let's see, who has that? Mr. Reynolds? Is that Mr. Reinhardt or who has this?
Yes, Mr. Reinhardt will be addressing that issue. Mr. President.
Good evening, President, and councilmembers or commission members. In front of you is the Resolution 202012, adopting the proposed 2021 EDA Special Benefit Levy of 350,000. EDAs have the statutory authority to levy a percentage of a city's estimated market value, which for 2021 would be a maximum of approximately $936,750. The EDA and the city council can set the levy up at any amount up to this cap. The EDA Special Benefit Levy is, is a levy that is applied to all taxable properties within the city, including properties that are currently part of the tax abatement in Tiff District. The EDA levy is also identified on the property tax statements separate outside the city's general property tax. Staff is recommending a preliminary EDA levy of 350,000 for 2021, which is the same amount as the previous three years. The budget includes 178,500 for wages and benefits, which pays for the economic development specialists plus a portion of the planning and development director's time. The EDA budget also includes 20,000 for legal services, 20,000 for engineering services, 125,000 in professional services, and 25,000 for the Main Street program. On the revenue side, we also included the one-time sale of land that the EDA owns for Verlin Drive and Taylor Street to MWF Properties. This was the item that was on last EDA's agenda, where we extended the purchase agreement. With that, I can stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Mars, please.
Mr. President, Nate, the EDA levy is always represented by a dollar amount rather than a percentage, right?
Correct.
Yep.
That's my question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Reinhardt, we have had this 350,000 EDA levy set aside as a separate levy, and I think it said three years, but we still levied for this, and it was, I think it might have been a little smaller amount, but the same amount, but we levied it differently in the past. So nothing's really changed with this in many years. Is that correct?
Yeah, since we've started levying in the EDA, previously, we used to do a transfer from the general fund into the EDA to fund EDA operations, and then three years ago, we changed to having the EDA actually do the levy, and it's been the same amount the past three years.
I think it's a little more transparent, so I appreciate that for our citizens, they can see exactly where their tax dollars are going. So thank you for that. Is there any other questions on the, on this topic? What are the wishes of the authority? Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to adopt Resolution E2020-012, adopting the proposed 2021 EDA Special Benefit Levy of 350,000.
I think you were muted, Member Brennan?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Member Brennan. Any other discussion? 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 Please take the roll.
Commissioner Lehman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. That includes our business for today. Are there any other business for the EDA? We're up to item six. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'd like to offer a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October 6th, at 7:00 PM.
I think we have Mr. Lehman's second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? 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 Please take the roll.
Commissioner Lehman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. Please stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to reconvene this City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for September 15th. We just completed our EDA meeting and back in general, city council meeting, and we're moving along to 9A1, which is a EDA Special Levy Benefit and Preliminary Budget for 2021. Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. State statute requires the city also to adopt that EDA levy that was just recently approved by the EDA, or the preliminary levy, I should say, of 350,000. So with that, that's what is in front of you.
Questions of staff? We just had this one up for discussion at the EDA. We approved it at the EDA, now needs to be ratified at the council level. Council, Council Whiting?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the EDA special revenue. I don't have that in front of me. How would we like to have the Special Benefit Levy for the EDA for 2020, 2021? Oh, 2021, thank you.
Councilor Lehman?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it.
You can restate, please.
Change. The Economic Development EDA Special Benefit Levy and Preliminary Budget for 2021, if that's okay with the motion maker?
Thank you. I will accept that.
Okay. So I have a motion on the table to approve the levy not to exceed 350,000, and the preliminary budget included. Further, a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Let's move ahead then to 9A2, which is our monthly financial review for August 2020, and welcome, welcome back. Nate?
Thank you. So our monthly review financial report, I wanted to go over that as well as what the city has submitted so far for coronavirus relief fund expenditures through August 31st. This, tonight, you get a lot of numbers, I guess, is what it comes down to. This slide shows the general fund through August. Overall, we're trending positive for the year. This, through the end of August, represents 66% of the way through the year. Revenues were at 68% of budget, and expenditures were at 64%. Just a few items to note, intergovernmental revenues, which is 288% of budget, does include the 3.1 million of coronavirus relief funds, which I'll talk about in a couple of slides. And then in charges for services, that includes community center ice arena, sand venture revenues. Those are at 44% of budget, which we'll also talk about. The planning and development budget is exceeding the targeted amounts as a result of the small business grants from CureZac funds, and then inspections is exceeding the targeted amounts as a result of the purchase of Tyler Building Software. The city received 3.1 million of CureZac funds on July 3rd. We're responsible as a city in determining the eligible expenses that qualify for these funds and then maintaining documentation. That documentation will be subject to will be subject to single audit, which is an additional audit completed within the course of our annual audit. And then additionally, we are required to report to the state on how much we spent on a monthly basis. The first report was due August 11th and covered March through July, and then the second report was due September 9th. The state did add additional reporting categories on the second reporting deadline, and then required all cities to amend previous amounts to fit into the additional categories, which we now have reflected on our report. So here's what we reported to the state for our expenditures from March 1st through August 31st that are eligible for coronavirus relief fund. The amounts are reported in one of 18 different categories. Previously, this was six categories, but this is a summary of the incurred expenditures that the city resubmitted in that report. We have submitted a total of 2.5 million in eligible expenses, including 290,000 for August. The largest portion relate to public safety, so police and fire. And then for August, the biggest addition to the report was 139,000 in small business assistance grants.
And remind, Nate, remind counselors that the 139 was not in our last report. You had a line item, but it was blanked because we hadn't closed the books on August yet.
Yeah, that is correct. I had kind of a placeholder in there for the 200,000 that was approved by city council. Ultimately, we provided 139,000, and those expenditures occurred in August, so.
Thank you.
And then just one additional caveat, both the state and federal government are contending to make modifications to reporting requirements and guidance. So we have put forth a good faith effort in complying with the reporting requirements, but may, but sometime in the future, it may come to us making amendments to the final reports once we've had more clarification on what qualifies and the eligible use. So you may see amendments to these reports at some point in the future still. On the revenue side, speaking more towards COVID-19 impacts, one of our early fears was that we'd see a slowdown in growth in building permit revenue. Permit revenue is ahead of budget, 84% through the end of August, so we haven't necessarily seen a drastic impact there. And from previous discussions, as we've talked about, we're seeing most of our significant impacts in park and recreational revenues. Park and recreation revenues were down approximately 800,000 from last year through August. There has been some offsetting costs related to operations such as part-time and seasonal staffing, but we're still down a net amount of about 463,000 through the end of August. I looked back to see where we were at last month, and we're pretty much in the identical position as far as net impact. So we're starting to see that flatten out a little bit, and then hopefully in terms of revenues, we're at a turning point where instead of having our losses increase from month to month, we're starting to see them shrink. So hopefully, that's a sign to contend the rest of the year. And that is it for my monthly financial report.
Covered a lot of ground there in a short period of time, our monthly financial breakdown of the cares expense and, and detail on that. Any questions from counselors? Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. A question that I have is, do we know if, I know they put a deadline of, I think it was December 31st, is there any discussion at the federal level of that deadline being extended?
Thanks for the question, Councilor Lehman. Actually, the deadline for the state of Minnesota is November 15th, and what the state has said is that, that expenses must either be incurred or have to be ordered, and the, the stream of commerce has been interrupted because of COVID or through some kind of overstretching of the stream of commerce. So we're looking to have it done by November 15th. Any funds that we do not have done by November 15th then have to be submitted to the county.
Okay.
And as Mr. Reinhardt had spoken, there, there has been discussion in Washington about expanding the uses or making up for lost revenue, but there's been no action to date, and time is running out on that.
Okay.
Other questions on this? Other questions on this? If not, thank you. All right. Next up then, 9A3, approval of our capital improvement plan, and Nate will present.
I don't have to go very far tonight. So within the council packet, I just wanted to kind of mention a couple of things. You should have received the full capital improvement plan, 2021 through 25, so you should have all the information in, in the book. And then I also had put together a kind of a one or two-page summary of the changes that we made since our last discussion on, I guess, back in July on the CIP, so that you can see all the changes that we made from that, from that presentation. Just to give a little background on the CIP itself, the capital improvement plan, so commonly referred to the CIP, non-binding document of future intent of capital projects over the next five years. However, staff is working internally on expanding that from a five-year plan to a 15-year plan, which we hope to present and discuss with the city council moving forward here in the future. The document itself allows the city to plan for larger and more complex projects. By design, the CIP is fluid, because priorities can change drastically based on current circumstances. Ultimately, though, the 2021 projects listed in the plan will be incorporated within the 2021 budget and approved if, well, and approved with the adoption of the budget. The CIP is a prioritized list of capital projects based on the estimated year needed and based on anticipated funding opportunities. There are full definitions within the document, but I'd simply think of the three priorities as There are full definitions within the document, but I'd simply think of the three priorities as have to do, smart to do, and want to do. Here is the CIP schedule. We had our preliminary review in July. Tonight, we're asking for the CIP to be adopted by the city council. And then in December, the 2021 projects will be adopted with the annual budget. Here's the total CIP expenditures by fund. Over the five-year CIP, we have identified 132 million in projects. 52 million in 2021, with the larger projects included in buildings, capital improvements, park development, park development and sanitary sewer funds. The buildings funds does include the Innovation Center, which would be contingent upon being awarded federal funding for that project. Here's the funding source summary. Just wanted to emphasize that the projects have various funding sources. So property tax isn't the primary source of revenues for these projects. Funding sources include park dedication fees, local, state, and federal grants, cost sharing with local partners, franchise fees, special assessments, internal rent charges from various departments, and then utility charges for the sanitary sewer and storm drainage infrastructure. And we did go into detail on the CIP work session, so I don't want to go through each individual project. But I did put an emphasis on, well, I should say, we put an emphasis on getting the most accurate and up-to-date information and estimates into the plan prior to adoption. So even though it is a plan that's subject to change tomorrow, we have, we have at least the most updated, accurate amounts that we know of as of today. So we did have a number of changes from that work session. Most of those changes were related to revised project estimates or timing. I have provided the document that lists out each change and page number related to that project. So I just wanted to maybe cover cover some of those changes. For the park development fund, we did modify the cash flows that are included in the document for the reduction of the $200,000 park development levy. As far as individual project modifications, for Riverfront Marina, we reduced the 2021 project cost from 200,000 to 145,000. For Jennifer Lane Neighborhood Project or Park, we reduced the 2020 project cost from 300,000 to 24,950 and then moved 250,000 to 2021. For the Verling Greenway Trail, increased the 2021 project cost by 84,000, which was a carryforward of unspent 2020 funds, and then decreased the 2022 project cost from 500 to 200,000. For the trail, wayfinding and amenities, increased the 21 project cost from 100,000 to 150,000. And then for Riverside Grove, it's a new park that we added to the 2021 with a project cost of 225,000. For Alliance Park renovation, we reduced the 21 from 255,000 to 100,000 and then increased the 22, 2022 project cost from 325 to 525. Windmere Bluff Community Park decreased the 22 project cost from 500 to 200,000. Quarry Lake Park improvements decreased 21 project cost from 260,000 to zero and then increased the 22 project cost from 200 to 650. The scenic kites master plan added a new 200,000 project cost to 2022. And then South Ridge Regional Trail Connection, the Shutterup Trail and Bluff Trail and Killarney Hill Park were shifted back one year. And then for Huber Park, Riverbank and Park Integration, reduced 21 project cost by 515 to 500 and added 265 to the 2022 costs. Hey, I was on delay. Let me click back there. See if you can pull it back up.
Trying to go back one page.
Skip one, back one. Yeah, thank you. And then for the CIP fund, the County Highway 83 project, the 21 project estimate, we got a revised amount from the county. Revised to four, from 4.26 to 5.66. And correspondingly, we increased the city's portion of federal funding from 0 to 1.35. Net impact of the city CIF fund was about an increase of 54,000. Added Scott County ADA Trail improvements for 2022, which is the city's share of that project. For the information technology internal service fund, we adjusted some of our estimates for expenditures for software purchases, software maintenance, and logist services, which resulted in, I guess, annual savings each year. For 2021, that amount decreased by 70,000. So ultimately, this reduced what we charged for rents to the general fund to, to provide the funding for that fund and then added a $200,000 replacement of the server and storage system in 2023. The Innovation Center and the Building Internal Service Fund revised the project's funding source to show 100% funding from outside sources. Originally, we had a portion coming out of the Building Internal Service Fund, and then the Sand Venture Pool Side Pump removed from 2021, as this will be completed in 2020. For the sanitary sewer fund, SCADA system upgrades shifted from 19 to 21. Updated project cost to 516,000 based on the feasibility study cured in place. Sewer pipelining for 22, updated cost from 100 to 170,000. And then South Ridge Lift Station Rehab and SCADA, new project in 2022 added for 135,000. Lift Station Number 16 Rehab updated the total project cost from 1.446 to 2.73 and then adjusted the years. And then for 2021, we removed the Public Works Easement reel jetting machine, which was in there for 77,000 after determining that there wasn't a cost benefit to it. So I go through all those changes just because it's one of those things that we didn't, you know, change in the document between what was presented and making sure you've got.
Nate, let's see if we have a question here. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you give a brief overview of why the lift station rehab doubled in cost? I know we all know because we inquired with the city administrator, but it'd be good for the public to understand why that cost went up almost double.
Yeah, maybe we can get a comment from either Nate or Steve.
Yeah, I'll have Steve comment on it. I had his notes, but.
The rebuild of lift stations are very expensive.
Yes.
Mayor and council members, good evening. The original lift station project is still at 1.4 million. But what we did through the feasibility study is we, we evaluated the total lift station and they identified other improvements that will be needed in the future on the lift station that aren't necessarily needed right now because there is some life expectancy in some of the equipment in the lift, lift station, such as HVAC and some of the actual controls. The variable frequency drives that we currently have are still operationable. So we don't need to replace everything with this phase one of the project, if you will. But through that evaluation, we identified additional improvements that will be needed in the future on the lift station. And we will maximize the life of those components that I just mentioned. So we have a placeholder a couple of years out for that additional work, but we will shift them as far to the right in future years as, as we possibly can while maintaining a good reliability of the lift station.
And so I, I had this one circled too, that Counselor Lehman brought up. And so we're going to see additional dollars spent on, on lift station 16 over the next several years, or would this be complete for a while?
Mayor and council members, the, the first phase would be completed in 2021. And then there would be subsequent phases in a, you know, under a totally different plan set, totally different project. One thing I would add as well is through the feasibility study, we identified some repairs that are needed on the actual dike that surround the lift station and the drainage system there in case flooding occurs. So that would be another portion of the project that was actually added through that study.
Right. Well, it is a critical piece of our community's infrastructure that we don't think a lot about every time. But did you have more questions? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. So the 1446 is the initial 21 improvements. And then throughout the next few years, another 14, 1.4 is going to be spent on these other things that you found in the feasibility study. Is that correct?
Mayor and council members, that is, that is potentially correct. That is what we're planning right now. One example in why I say potentially is we have a, we have a generator that exists in that lift station. It's an expensive, several hundred thousand dollar generator, but it hardly ever gets used. So we are going to, the, the life of that generator could extend for another 15 years. You know, it's an old generator right now, but it's in really good shape. But we want to, we want to keep that placeholder there. So when we need to replace that generator, we have planned accordingly. So I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely. And Mayor, one last comment, and you, you made the point that the importance of that lift station. If I recall, years back, we were educated on it that a lot of old shock, P, gravity feeds down to the river interceptor line, and then gravity's over to the lift station to where it has to be forced further east to Blue Lake. And if that doesn't operate, that would be bad.
Correct.
That's why we're planning for it not to, not to fail.
Right.
Very good. We could get some video out if you'd like to watch some more video. Any other questions on this, on the change page at all? Proceed.
That should bring me to my final slide here. So upcoming steps, if approved tonight by city council, we'll get the final CIP on our website. So the full plan will be available for anyone who may want more information on those projects. Each specific project does have a specific contact person listed, which is intentional, so you know who is responsible for that project. The 2021 CIP projects will be included with the budget for approval in December. And then as a reminder, that going forward, all projects that exceed 25,000 will be brought forward for city council consideration and approval. So city council will have a, a chance to further review all individual projects.
Yep. So we would see a 90% of these projects back for further approval. Other questions of staff? I guess I have a few. Just a little concerning on the, the fund balance, and I know this is just a one-year snapshot in time. I get that. It's a five-year plan, but we're focusing on one year, and I, I truly do understand that. But the capital improvement fund, park development fund, and the, actually, the sewer fund caught my eye where those balances are coming down. And any concern there?
So I would say, so I, I, in, in, within the book is the cash flows that we discussed at the last work session. So I've included those for, and it's what the mayor is referring to. The two funds that I, that show that we have potential shortfalls, you know, within the next couple of years would be the CIP fund or the CIF fund and the park development fund. So I, I wouldn't necessarily say there's concerns. We talked a little bit about potentially having a bond issue for the CIF fund that would eliminate the gap within that fund. Again, it's kind of wait and see where some of these projects come in. And then with the Parks Development Fund, it's probably shifting projects there, you know, one, one way or the other. The sanitary sewer fund, I believe we have sufficient cash if you continue to.
I know we did a big study several years ago, but the, the balances come down, and yes, it's steady, it's just steady at a lower level.
Yeah, and that's the hard thing with some of these funds is they're swinging up and down quite a bit because these projects are pretty large projects. So you may have the up and down within these funds a lot more than you would see with your operational funds. And I, I also think once we get the 15-year CIP and we start mapping those out on cash flows, we'll even have a better understanding of, of kind of where we'll, where we look at in the future, but.
Good. Further questions? Further questions? Counselor Whiting?
Thank you. No, I took a look at the, the changes that I made, and it did look like we used your need to have, smart to have, and like to have kind of concept on making some of those changes and adjustments to, to the fund. So I'd like to see that, you know, these things change, but 2021 will be locked in here soon. But I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2021 to 2025 capital improvement and CIP.
When, Counselor Whiting, when speaking, make sure you're speaking directly into your headset, if that's, thank you. So you're making a motion?
Yes. Do you want me to restate it?
Yep. I got a, I have a motion.
A second?
Counsel, Counselor Brennan, second it. Further discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm a little bit relieved at the need to have, nice to have, and less important. You know, as you know from the last meeting, I'm concerned about the economy and the impacts of the COVID. And I, I think some of these moves on just that little bit of gap to see where things go brings me some relief, and I appreciate it from the council.
Yep. Thank you very much. I think there are a couple of bigger projects that make up the 21 part of, part of it. And I did speak with the city administrator about the county one, County Road 83 project that we, we tried to get the former county administrator to nail down at about 1.4 million dollars. But like I said, that was an administrator ago. But those are real dollars and, but taking care of 83 opens up new opportunities for shock therapy, so I get that. But I think some of this stuff is, stuff we don't think about every day. We're talking about lift station 16, et cetera, and some of the important stuff to, to keep our community safe and sound and well-maintained is important, so. With that, further discussion? Discussion, discussion by voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. The five-year capital improvement plan is approved. Let's now move ahead to 984. The 2021 proposed property tax levy, general fund budget and debt levy cancellation. Welcome back, Nate.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, my last presentation of the night. But tonight, we're asking for adoption of the 2021 preliminary levy and budget. And I'll get, oh, here we go. We got the slide pulled up. New slide, moving to the next slide. So our 2021 proposed budget developed based on some overlying financial objectives from both city council and administration. This would include consideration of the city council's strategic priorities of financial stability, enhanced community strengths, effective public services and communication, and also direct, direction from city council to continue to be one of the lowest tax communities in the metro. The proposed budget has been able to accomplish this from continued tax capacity growth in both existing and new property. From the administration side, we continue to emphasize financial transparency and that our financial decisions are made with the future in mind to ensure the city's ongoing ability to provide quality services at a reasonable price. Based on our budget discussion on September 1st, we did modify our 2021 proposed budget to include the fire department staffing model that we implemented as a result of COVID-19. This included staffing with four part-time firefighters Monday through Friday from 3:00 PM to 7:00 AM and a full day on Saturday and Sunday. Most importantly, this modification has resulted in a decrease in the average response time from 6 minutes and 30 seconds to 1 minute and 30 seconds. The schedule shifts have been well-received by part-time firefighters, who have been able to better plan their, their schedules, which ultimately should improve recruitment and retention. As part of that discussion, as a result of the change of the staffing model, we will forego replacing Rescue 2 fire truck. This was scheduled to be replaced in 2026 for 450,000. And then we've also removed the planned construction of Fire Station 3, which we had in our capital improvement plan for 5.5 million. That net impact on the 2021 budget, after we reduced for the equipment rent charges, and then made some additional operational adjustments, and as well as the allocation to the townships, resulted in a net levy impact of 175,000. The proposed, the proposed preliminary city levy of 21,017,800 is an increase of 637,000 or 3.13% over last year. This is a reduction of 25,000 from our discussion on the first. So we've added the fire department staffing, and then based on council direction, we further reduced the levy by the eliminating the park development levy, which was 200,000, so a net savings of 25,000. We do not believe the reduction will have a immediate impact on the 2021 or 20, or the 2020 and 2021 park development projects, but we may need to adjust future plans to accommodate the reduction. The preliminary EDA, as approved by city council earlier today, was identical to last year at 350,000. Again, we have authority levy up to 936,000, so that there is remaining capacity available. The preliminary levy is the maximum the city levy can be. The final levy may be less, but it cannot be more than the preliminary levy. For the debt service levy, shown on the slide here, we will have 2020, or 2010 A improvement bond paid off, so there will not be a levy needed for that. Our past practice has been to keep our debt service levy stable from year to year, so included as part of the budget agenda item is a resolution to cancel a portion of the debt service levy for 2021. The resolution is required by the county whenever we levy an amount that varies from our debt payment schedule. So we are able to do this because we have existing debt service funds available, and also we fund a portion of one of the debt payments through a transfer from the Billings Internal Service Fund. And then just a side note here, when we talk about a 1% levy increase or decrease per year, it amounts to about 203,000, so.
How much?
203,000.
203?
Correct.
Per 1%.
Per every 1% up or down. On the next slide is the 2021 preliminary general fund budget. The budget incorporates the general fund portion of the preliminary tax levy, along with the budget impacts we discussed at last council meeting, including the modifications for the fire department staffing. I have three items I highlighted on the right of the slide that I think kind of summarizes the preliminary budget. In total, we're seeing very minimal, well, minimal change from non-property tax revenue sources, 53,500 increase from 2020. On the expenditures, on the expenditure side, we've held the line as much as we could without impacting service levels, and in actuality, improved our service levels with the additional fire department staffing. Operationally, we're seeing a net increase there of 542,000, which sounds like a big dollar amount, but when you look at our operations, it's amounts to a 1.9% increase from 2020, and a third of that related to the fire staffing. The past few years, we have seen record building permit volume. With larger projects, we may see revenues collected in one year, but incur inspection costs for that project the following year. Last year, the city council formally committed funds to be used for future years, and that included 795,000 with the adopted 2020 budget as a way to offset related operational costs. The preliminary budget for 2021 utilizes 500,000, so this reduces that budget gap by 295,000. On the next couple of slides, I just wanted to recap significant changes from the 2020 budget amount. Budget forecast includes a 259,000 or 14% reduction in building permit revenues. We've based this forecast based on less available developable, developable property within city limits, and then also the, the issue of economic uncertainty as we head into 2021. Recreational revenues, which we have used the 2019 actuals as the baseline for the 2021 budgeted amounts, we're actually budgeting a net increase of 172,000 from 2020. This sounds a little counterintuitive with what's happening related to COVID, but our 2020 budget was based on 2018 revenues. For 2018, we saw the, a significant increase going into 2019, and then we're also on pace for even more growth in 2020 prior to the COVID shutdown of, of some of our operations. So we're anticipating similar revenues as we did and saw in, in 2019, which actually actually resulted in a budget increase from the 2020 forecast. And then, as mentioned on the previous slide, we've adjusted the use of revenue reserves by 295,000. On the next slide, here's the expenditures. Nearly 70% of the general front operations are personnel costs. Personal costs include the additional fire, fire department staffing. However, it does not include a cost of living adjustment. We have three unions, all the contracts expire at the end of 2020, and we have not settled yet for 2021. In August, the city filled an open human resource specialist position with admin assistant. As part of that process, it was determined that the duties of the admin assistant position could be redistributed and completed by current staff. 2021 budget proposes the elimination of that admin assistant position, resulting in net savings of almost 95,000. And then at our last meeting, we discussed a 8% budgeted health insurance increase. We have received our insurance renewal numbers and reduced that assumption to 3%, which lowers that amount from 60 to 63,000, or by 60,000 to 63,000. We have left the reduction in the personnel category, though, until we have a better idea of where we end up with our, our contracts. And then step increases for existing employees, workers' comp, premium increases and other miscellaneous adjustments result in an additional 343,000 budget allocation for '21. And then lastly, we did reduce some of our operations in the community center area related to advertising, training, and a contractual cleaning service contract for a total of about 91,000. The city's estimated market value, 6.57 billion. This is an increase of 521 million, 8.6% from last year. New construction accounts for 116 million, or 22.2% of this increase. New construction allows the tax levy to be spread across a larger tax base, reducing the tax burden on existing taxpayers. Apartment value, as shown on this slide, grew at the fastest rate. There's double-digit growth in both new apartments, as well as existing market values related to apartments. And then since 2018, spurred by growth, the city's estimated market value has increased by over 1.4 billion, so since 2018.
1.4 billion?
Yep.
Wow.
On the next slide, this chart compares the city's tax capacity and rate over the past 15 years, including the 2021 preliminary levy. The blue bar shows the, the growth in the city tax capacity since 2013. The proposed tax levy will drop the city's tax rate from 33.965 to 31.85. This is a decrease of 2.11%, and it is also the fourth consecutive year we've seen a tax rate decrease. On the next slide, the city levies a, a dollar for taxes, which is spread against all taxable properties in proportion to their percentage of total tax capacity. The city residential represents 61.4% of the city's tax capacity. This comparison of last year shows that residential will pay 1.7% less of the share of total city property taxes in 2021, with apartment and commercial paying a proportionate percentage more. So even though you're seeing residential market values increase, they're not increasing as fast as some of those other categories, which results in a little bit of the shift in property taxes away from, from homeowners.
The residents are carrying less of the levy than previous year.
That is correct, by 1.7%. And then the medium value home, I did get a report from the county, and it showed that 10% of homes in Shockpee had no change or a decrease in their home values. 10% saw more than a 10% increase in their home value, and that, that means the remaining 80% were between 0 and 10% as far as a value increase. When looking at the medium value home, that went from 251,000 to 266,800 over the past year, which is an increase of 15,800 or 6.3%. This chart shows that medium value home, as well as the property taxes paid on that since 2016. The 2021 tax impact on that medium value home, based on what we're being, what's being proposed tonight is $5 annually, or less than 10 cents per week. So in, in, so since 2016, the medium value home has increased by 30.5% compared to just 14.9% of, in property taxes paid on that home. So you're, in other words, that home value is growing at a faster rate than the proportionate share of property taxes.
Home values are growing twice as fast as the, the tax rate.
Yep, and then I always like to put things in comparison, because we always talk about this percentage levy, so every 1% change in the levy amounts to $9 on the medium value home, for reference.
Well, questions? I apologize. Questions? Oh, I apologize. Go ahead, Nate.
Sure. And if, yep, one, one slide here, just to kind of highlight what we talked about tonight, but the impact on the preliminary levy. So again, preliminary levy will reduce the city's tax rate by 2.1% from 33.97 to 31.85. This represents the fourth straight year that we've seen a, a tax decrease, and we contend to be one of the lowest tax communities in the metro. For the medium value home, increasing by 6.3%, equates to a $5 annual increase, so very minimal impact on a typical homeowner. For that, you know, for that medium value home, home is 15, worth 15,800 more, and that tax impact is only $5. The property tax impact will obviously differ, differ depending on each home and their value, but absent any change in value, so if you had a, a home that did not change in value from last year, and it was the, at the medium value home value, that homeowner could expect a tax decrease of $5 or 6%. Then the city continues to see growth just from new construction added to tax roll. The city could raise the levy by 420,000 or 2.1% before, for any impact on existing properties. So with that, here's the budget timeline moving forward. Tonight, we're asking for adoption of the preliminary levy. After the adoption of the preliminary levy, that levy cannot increase, and then in November, property tax notices will be mailed by the county that reflect what is approved tonight. And then in December, we'll ask for final council approval.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Questions of staff? Counselor Whiting?
Let me get this right. So even with the median value home raising, I think you said 15,800, with our proposed levy here, that would mean an increase of $5.
Yep, that is correct.
Wow, that's great.
House goes up 6.3% in value, it's $5.
Follow-up question, Counselor Whiting?
I know a question. You know, we've done a lot of work on this, I think, again, four years in a, in a row with a tax decrease, so I would make a motion to adopt resolution number R2020-101 and R2020-102, 2020 property tax levy and canceling certain debt services levies for taxable, or taxes payable in 2021.
I have a motion on the table, Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, I'd like to second, and then I'd like to speak to it.
And so I have a motion and a second, and then we would open it up for discussion. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know Mr. Reynolds has worked very hard on this, and the timing couldn't be better, especially with all the uncertainty and the economic issues of households and businesses. So I, I commend him and staff for working this hard and council, because, you know, I know we're gonna have the houses that increase in value 10% or more, and they're gonna see an increase. But I, we're also gonna see the houses that fall in between the 6% or, or no increase that are gonna see a decrease. So I think this is great timing, considering what's happening in, in the world, in the country, and I just wanted to commend council and staff, and specifically Mr. Reynolds, because I know he set a goal, and as we set a goal of getting that tax rate down. So kudos to Mr. Reynolds and staff and council. It relieves me at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman. Mr. Reynolds?
Thanks, Mayor Mars, and members of council. The reality, Counselor Lehman and council, is that I just put the goal out there. The hard work has been done by Mr. Reinhardt, his staff, and then the department heads and staff of the organization as a whole. My job is relatively easy when it comes to budget, and that is simply to put the goals out there and try to get us to it. The actual sharpening of the pencils and going through the budget documents and everything else is done by, by, by other staff.
Thank you. Other comments? Discussion?
I think I.
Did you have more, Counselor Lehman?
Well, Mayor, I, I think I included staff in my comments, so thanks to staff, too, and, and council.
All right, great. I think what really catches me here a little bit is the, the financial stewardness of our community over the last many years, the, from 2016, your taxes increasing 14%, but for most people, their home, home is part of their, the three-legged stool of retirement, and, and a portion of that, and for that to go up 30% in, in four years, and I understand the housing market is red hot. Also, I think with, in our community, you know, that this growth has always been a question, and, but to see that growth in net market value increased by 1.4 million dollars in, in just a couple of years is fantastic, and it's actually benefiting our residential district, because now our residential portion is paying less, slightly less of the levy. We've, we've always had a pretty tight budget roughly in our community, especially over the last five years. These budgets are not easy to machine down and keep a cap on, but I, I, I find value in the hard work of our staff, and thank you very much. And I think our open discussion of our council's been fairly robust on this over this period of time, so. Those are my comments. Anything else? There is a motion on the table. I do have a second. If there would be no further discussion, discussion by voice, vote.
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then. Nate, are you leaving us? Thank you. Let's move ahead then to planning and development. 9B1, a rezoning of property from B1 to highway business to I2 heavy industrial, something rare. Mr. Kurski, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So this is a, as you said, a rezoning of property from B1 highway business to I2 heavy industry. So this is the site, it's next to existing cargo Van Gogh on the highway, and as part of this project, you'll see they'll be using the cargo Van Gogh access point. So the applicant is John Messenbrink, the address is 7380 County Highway 101 East, the lots 1.5 acres. It's currently zoned B1 highway business. The current guiding in the 2040 comprehensive plan is industrial. The applicant is proposing to construct 12,000 square feet of multi-tenant industrial building. Potential users could be contractors, vehicle repairer, machine shops, or small manufacturing operations. So the gray is the heavy industrial that surrounds it, so now we'll just be left with two remaining parcels here that are in B1.
And one's a cargo, and one's a trailer.
Correct, sir.
All right, okay.
So Mayor and council, this is the proposed elevations for the building, so it's a industrial building, again, designed to be for multi-tenant users. There's a pretty big demand in the Shockpee market for these small users, for contractors and other small companies that need large base space in industrial areas.
Okay.
And this is the layout, so significant amount of parking, and again, And this is the layout, so significant amount of parking, and again, their circulation will be through the existing cargo Van Gogh, so there will be no additional access point on County Highway one oh one.
It would enter through the, through the cargo business?
Yes, Mayor. So Planning Commission recommended city council approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff's recommending adopting the ordinance twenty twenty zero one one.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, does the access across the other property, does that get recorded with this, or how does that work? Or is it the same property owner on both of them?
Mayor and council, as part of this transaction, it will be the same property owner.
Okay.
I think the same property owner just going to build out their other parcel and do industrial, and then lease or rent that out.
Mayor, that's correct.
More questions of staff? If not, thank you. Does the applicant want to come forward and make any comment? Questions? How do we want to proceed, counselors? Counsel Brennan?
I, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance number zero two zero two, zero two zero two zero dash zero one one, an ordinance rezoning a one point five acre property from B one highway business to I one, I two heavy industry.
Okay.
Whiting, second.
Counsel Whiting, second. Further discussion? I guess, you know, I drive by here, I did, before we got, working from home, drive by this area all the time, and I think it's a great opportunity for a little bit of infill development there, in between the businesses to the west. And obviously, we saw if we can expand our commercial industrial base, that helps our residential here locally, and kind of rare that we would see a, in today's era, to see a rezoning, which I classify as an upzone, from a B one to a heavy industrial. You know, usually they're the other way around, because industry has changed, but I count this as good news for our community. Counsel Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I agree with you. There's rare times when you want to upzone to an industrial, and this is the perfect area for it. And like you mentioned, this is kind of a hot, tight property that they're proposing, so that'll be good for some of those smaller businesses, in a good spot for it, so an easy one, and the neighbors will probably be friendly.
Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to nine B two, final plat of Sweet Living Shakopee and amendment to the planned unit development for Sweet Living Senior Care of Shakopee. Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and council, this is basically finishing off the corner adjacent to the Willows. So this is the Sweet Living Shakopee place. Adjacent to them is a daycare facility, and then to the south is the Willows. So this will be the last piece in this area to be developed. So Hampton Senior Care is the applicant here. The proposed building basically is for memory care and assisted living care. Since this is a PUD amendment, they'll be utilizing LP smart siding, some cultured stone. They're not requesting any variances from design guidelines, and they've also proposed, they, there are other locations, they have a lot of other facilities, are near daycare, there's a lot of interaction, children being able to visit when things get better, seniors and aides in those people's lives. Next. So this is the final plat parcel. It's a little difficult site, because there's a lot of easements running through the front And this is the proposed building, so not a lot of parking. The parking is just largely for employees and visitors, because the residents don't drive. And here's a rendered site plan, so pretty heavily landscaped along the main road, and then some site landscaping. There's a small building that is proposed, kind of like a carriage house, that's where they'll be storing the dumpsters along with materials they have for things like Christmas decorations and holiday decorations. And this is the proposed building, meets all our, our design standards, got a lot of roof variation. And this is the layout, so they're pretty small units. Again, this is for memory care and assisted living, these facilities tend to be the last destination for people, so this kind of creates a corridor here, so we have on one end BHS, and this would be kind of the, the next step.
Questions of staff? I guess, I feel kind of this is great for our community. I know there isn't any independent living here, but when people, when folks, you know, can't manage at their own home, but they can come and stay and still be in the community, I think, I think that is great. I've always heard there's more need from our community for more options for seniors, and I think a place like this is important. And even with BHS, this in addition would be a great addition to our community. Comments of counselors, of staff? Questions of staff? If not, thank you.
Applicants here also.
Does the applicant want to make a comment? Any questions for the applicant, if he's here? All right. How do you want to proceed? Counselmember Brennan?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R twenty twenty dash zero, or sorry, one zero eight, a resolution approving the final plat of Sweet Living Shakopee and a planned unit development amendment for a property located north of Seventeenth Avenue, County Road, Highway sixteen, east of Windermere Way, south of Highway one sixty-nine, and west of Marytown's Road, and moved to a stop.
Okay.
Whiting, second.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Whiting. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye, or by voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to nine B three, PUD concept plan for Windermere and Green, Greenway Open Space Plan with land swap trade. Michael, good evening.
Evening again, Mayor and council. So you're getting to see this before you, there's no action required tonight, we're just looking for some feedback. This did go to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board last evening. So this is kind of the lay of the land here, so you can see the Norcore property up on the left in the purple. D.R. Horton has the tan property currently under contract. They own the kind of salmon-colored property. There's the city property in blue, and so they've been working for quite a while on potentially expanding Windermere into this area, and from a planning standpoint, it creates some challenges, because you can see Lucetano down by where the Spuck water tank is, will be going through here, but we need to get street connectivity to their other parcel up above. So in order to do that, have to go through a little bit of gymnastics. So the planned Windermere Community Park, there's two drainage parcels on that, is in green here, and then here are the two D.R. Horton parcels. And this is the proposed concept plan, so it's forty-one point three acres, one hundred and fourteen new units, and there's roughly four point four acres of parks and trail corridors and ponding. So the goal here is they would give up, we would give up a little bit of parkland so they can get that road through, and they've ghosted out the future parcels on the Norcore parcel, and this is in compliance with the Parks Master Plan and the West End Plan. Go ahead. So the crosshatched areas here is basically the land swap. The city would trade four thousand seven hundred ninety-eight square feet down in the corner, the southern corner, for of city-owned land, and they would give us seven thousand five hundred and fifty square feet of land to expand that community park a little bit. Can you go back to the plan? The reason why we're, this would be a PUD, and the reason why you're seeing this is, one, we need, I think, a head nod that you agree on exchanging the land, but two, there are other big proposals here, is to do some narrower, narrower lots. So Windermere's been very successful, as most of you know, they've actually been setting records for not only sales, but building permits out here, and with costs of lumber and other things increasing, they want to deliver a different product, so, one, we don't have a homogeneous community out here of similar homes. They want to do some more price obtainable homes down in that darker yellow area. So these would be on fifty-five-foot wide lots, two-car garage, one and two-story homes. So it's a, a product D.R. Horton has, it's not currently in the market, and they believe they can deliver for a little bit more competitive price and give some more variety to this subdivision. So that's why this would be a PUD. Also, they're proposing, as part of the PUD, to have the trail system that's in the master plan, that they would actually construct that. Go ahead. So this was the master plan, so up on the top of the screen, that will be the park that you approve the concept designing for tonight, and they would connect this corridor down through their subdivision to complete this, and it would also help the neighborhood. We found that getting the parks developed as people are moving in also helps in their sales. Go ahead. So these were some of the concepts from the Parks Master Plan, one of the things we discussed. So D.R. Horton's been doing a lot of these communities around the country, and they found that the community gardens have not been an easy sell. People would rather have their plants on their own property, so we've made some suggested changes. Go ahead. So this would be part of the pathways for play. One of the things in the master plan, people ask what is sand and water, so these are some examples from other parks that have been completed and projects that D.R. Horton's worked on, so allows smaller children to basically play with some water and other elements. Go ahead. And then music and sound, we have some of this in some of our other parks, but as part of this project, they would build out these amenities. Go ahead. And then food and edibles and pollinator habitats, so exchanging out the community gardens for this instead, so they would plant fruit cheese in this area for the residents along with several large kind of quiet places for pollinator gardens. If you all remember, bees are pretty important, and this would be an area, because of the water and other, other amenities, where the pollinator gardens, gardens would do really well. So this was recommended for approval last night by the PRAB. You're reviewing tonight the concept plan that requires a little bit of a land swap. The Planning Commission would review the concept in October. They would develop, move forward, work with city staff in finalizing this plan, and they would submit for a preliminary plat and a planning and development zoning at the November Planning Commission, and then the second meeting at the city council November.
Excellent. Questions of staff? Counsel Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I like the fact that they're being innovative in, in price point of, of housing. The question that I have is, on the map that we have that shows the land swap, I thought it said something about for a road, but I, I can't figure out how this impacts the roads on the plans that I have.
So Mayor and council, if you look at where the land swap is here, it allows that cul-de-sac road to be constructed up into the piece of property that D.R. Horton currently owns. If we didn't do that land swap, they don't have enough room to get that road through.
Can we put up this diagram?
Yep, go to the next one. There you go.
There you go. Where exactly is the road meeting this land swap in this picture?
So if you look at the, if you look at Outlet F, where it says City of Shakopee, we're giving up that forty-seven hundred square feet, right, keep going over, Andy, keep going, right, oh, other, other direction. There you go. Almost there. Up, up in that corner, in order to get lots through and make the subdivision work, they need that extra square footage so the road can go up into that cul-de-sac. They currently own that upper parcel, if you go back to that very first multicolored Keep going, there you go. So currently now, D.R. Horton owns that salmon-colored parcel, you can see the city parcel, there's a pinch point right there, that's where we need to do that land swap to be able to get the road and the lots up into that cul-de-sac. So the, the largest portion of the property is down in, in the yellow color. There we go. So, and we need that land swap basically to, to get that connection up into the other Horton piece.
I see, in the, in the blue point of between Horton City and Horton Under Contract.
Mayor and council, that's correct. So that's where the land swap is, so they can get up into that parcel.
Got it. Okay. Is there any issue from staff's perspective with this land swap?
Mayor and council, no, we're almost doubling the amount of land, and that city park is going to become a regional park for this area, so it's, it's really where we need the land. And as part of this being a PUD, they would not be getting park dedication actually for that land where the, the ponds and the trails go through. We would give them credit for some of the installation of some of the improvements there, but again, it's, it's kind of a win-win for this neighborhood and for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, you know, I like the idea of developer, first of all, putting part of this together, and then also completing that park and trail as those lots develop. I think that's important, because trying to get them through later is always more difficult. And the, the thing on the smaller lot size, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity to have some different options out there, and if that makes their price point even better, but we have to have some options out there for buyers, and I think this is a great way to try and do it, and working with a developer like this is, is important, and I think it's a good.
All right, thank you. Counsel Brennan?
Yep, I, I agree with the other comments. I think the single, single-level homes are really needed in this community, and, and I hear about that a lot. I have a question, is the, the Greenway Trail, is that going to be connecting into this area, or the Greenway, Veerling Greenway?
Mayor and council, the Veerling Greenway today does not cross over the bridge, but it has an opportunity to get picked up again. We've included trails through this subdivision, so they can get up to this park once the trail's corrected over the bridge at some point. The other thing that D.R. Horton's done, they were kind of the leader in the community, they have been building in the past, we, the city had been going in a year, up to ten years later, and putting trails in. They have been a leader as part of this subdivision to make it more walkable. They have been actually building the city trails and connecting them in, within the project. So this would be another piece where that green corridor would come through, so you'd be able to walk basically from the other city piece, there are connections through this neighborhood all the way through this park to where the Spuck Water Tower is. So I mean, it's a, a great opportunity, and they've been great to work with on really connecting all the trails to the subdivision.
Yep. I really like the concept of the nodes in the park, in the parkway, and the different activities that would be available also. Can I make a motion? Or there's no motion, there's just comments. Never mind.
Building consensus here tonight?
Yep.
So, thank you. I guess my comments, I don't, I don't really have a problem with the land swap. My questions are more park-related and then affordable housing, so to get to the top of the, the knoll here with the trail, I think that's fantastic for, for folks. Also, this will Also, this will connect with the other part of the park that we have some money in for the CIP that we approved. So these two will be seamlessly, right? Is that correct?
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, because there's a more active area park to the, on the city land to the east and we have money in our CIP that we just approved on a preliminary basis. So I think this gets that park activated, which is good. It also brings us to the, I think, the highest point in the city of Shakopee, which is pretty spectacular. And you can see forever when you're up there. So I really like that part. My concept on the narrower lots and a different product and trying to be affordable, the housing market has been going gangbusters. You know, there's been articles recently about the price of two-by-fours and et cetera, but I'm all for the affordable housing, I just want it. And then when, sometimes they say, well, I can, if I had a smaller footprint, narrower lot, and they bring the product, and then what happens actually is the market drives it up. The pure open market drives. And so I want to just make sure that somewhere along the line, there's some nice houses up there. I think they're over 400. They sell like hotcakes and that's great for our community, but if we could have some product at a much lower level and much more level is a, the million-dollar question.
Mayor and Counsel, I mean, I think one of the, we don't talk about affordable anymore. In new construction, we talk about obtainables. So rates are low right now and the good news is, in Windermere, we're seeing a lot of people that currently live in Shakopee are selling their $200,000 or $300,000 house and because rates are low and they have equity, they're able to buy and kind of upsize to a newer home in Windermere. So it's been a great opportunity. I think a lot of people thought this would be all new people to the community, but it's a lot of our current residents, a lot of interesting school district employees have moved here. And I think when we kind of envisioned Windermere way before my time, I think that D.R. Horton's been able to deliver because they've, they've been here a long time and, and they spent a lot of time and money planning this. And I, it was, there I did try and do a different product that would be more obtainable in the market and they've been successful in other communities at that price point. I think once it gets sold, the, the market will be what it is, but I think at least going in, they're trying to offer something at a little lower price point.
Right. Well, D.R. Horton has waited a long time for this opportunity and never gave up on our community. They're a good builder and producing a product that the market wants and especially for this West End where there's some, you know, unique topography there that they're playing out and I think in the end that will benefit our overall community. So I think we have enough consensus for now. We'll obviously see this back.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Let's move ahead then to 10A, which is the city bill list for our review. If there's any questions. Otherwise, we would move ahead then to 10B1, which is our liaison and administration report. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a scale executive meeting. Priorities, legislative priorities is the topic of the day, as you already know. Lot of different folks with a lot of different ideas. I guess one of my concerns about the legislative priorities through scale is there's a group that want to have like so many different priorities in like a booklet form and then there's a group that wants to have, you know, key priorities of the membership, narrow them down, a little more focused. And I'm actually on that narrow it down, a little more focused side of things. But we're not done, so we'll see where that goes and if anybody has legislative priorities on the council that they'd like to share, Mr. Reynolds joins that meeting, so he's pretty representative. Some of mine are making sure we don't lose some of the existing transportation funding that we have. I'd hate to see that happen. And I'm personally not opposed to a small gas tax to put toward road and bridge improvements. It would really be nice if they could take the dat, gas tax tax from areas and put that money to that area, but that's kind of wishful thinking on my behalf. We also had the regional training facility meeting. One of the topics there, well, well, obviously revenue is down due to COVID, but expenses are also down. There was an unexpected expense for door, like City Hall has where you can swipe your card and it unlocks the door. They have the same type of system and apparently cell phones wipe it out so the cards don't read. It's dated, it's over 10 years old, so there's going to be an upgrade to the system so that it doesn't wipe it out with a cellphone nearby. So that was another, kind of an expense. It wasn't too bad. They are moving forward with some marketing and marketing, trying to get revenue up. As you know, the membership charge was reduced. Curious to see how this plays out after this COVID thing is gone, if it's going to come back. They do have some leads on some new revenue streams, which is good. So they're making efforts. The guy that runs it out there is making some good solid efforts on raising the revenue with new opportunities, which was good to hear. 169 Quarter Coalition, there were some conflicts on the scheduling, that meeting was canceled. It'll be Thursday this week. Friday, I did attend the ribbon cutting on the 41, 169, 78 interchange. And what do they call that? Diverting diamond? Us X-figure-eight drivers are going to love it because you get two, two-figure-eight points in the same crossing. It's different, but looking at it and, and studying it, the city put out a video that's on, I don't know if it was their video, but Mindot, I think it was, city linked to it on YouTube. And looking at that, it takes away a lot of the left conflicts because you're crossing over while still giving you the free right. So I, I think that's kind of a cool thing. The question is, will drivers be able to learn it and adapt, you know, like a roundabout? So I, I think from a safety standpoint, it makes sense. It really does. So, and it's supposed to have a 20-year life expectancy, it's supposed to be able to handle increased capacities, a lot of good benefits to that. So I don't know if we're going to see more of them in different areas, but that project, matter of fact, I think it's opening today if all goes well.
Yep.
So we'll have to all go drive it and see what we think, you know? One comment I did have is some of the markings on the road that lead you to make that weird, I'm going into oncoming traffic now, should probably be fluorescent so that they really stick out at night and at least until the area learns it. They said that was a good idea, they'd probably incorporate that. So that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brennan?
Okay, the utilities, Shakopee Public Utilities Meeting was last week and I won't go into too much about the utility managers resignation. I think everybody knows about that. If anybody has questions right now, I can answer them.
Well, Counselor Brennan, I've, I've read the investigative report that finally went public last Wednesday and, you know, it's, it's very unfortunate for this organization to, to have that in-depth of stuff. And, you know, in the same time as having that be on the ballot in November in the hands of the voters, opportunity to create a change agent. I think sometimes change is hard, but I encourage every resident to read this. And I served on that board for a long time and it, it's really sad that the governance of that organization was not up to speed in current terms. You know, we all want better accountability, better utility city relations. There are some financial concerns here, state law violation and water quality. And while we meet the current standards, our levels are very elevated compared to the surrounding communities and should be a concern leading forward. There's been a lot of misinformation out on the, on the internet and it's really unfortunate that fear mongling and talking about things that may happen in the future that aren't up for discussion right now. But as, I think it's important for our community to not have a black eye on a organization that the city owns. And we should be thinking about being innovative and forward-leaning and lean into the future. If this utility has been separate for 70 years and it's up for a vote, vote here in November, we should really be thinking about the next 70 years, no matter of the outcome of the referendum. That puts us at 2090. Be forward-thinking. I think that the, these revelations in here stand now for opportunity and what we can do with that opportunity, I think is real important. Some people just say, well, okay. I don't think that, I think we should demand more, demand better. And I believe it's time for change. People are scared of change. But I think that change for the better, right? What if this utility, regardless of outcome, becomes much better in transparency, financials, relationships, and plans for the future? I think that's a benefit to our overall community. So there's been some rough moments over on Saracen Street for some while, but it, it's time to come together as a community and, and move forward in a positive direction. Those are my comments, Counselor Brennan, and I didn't mean to take up your liaison time, but over the last week, and this came out, I went on last week sometime and I've read it four times and it really grabs me pretty hard. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for those comments. It was really surprising to me about the lack of oversight that the commission had provided, especially in the last four years. There was no questions that were asked and I do have concerns about what else is not, what else is out there that hasn't, the questions weren't asked of. So I think that moving forward is a great, I think, is a necessity for our community. But I do have more to say. There is a temporary interim manager that's been appointed and that is Joe Adams. And then he will be in place until the interim manager has been selected. And that man has been interviewed and Deb Amundson and I interviewed him yesterday. So there will be a contract that's presented to the commission at the next meeting. Mr. Kors is from the MMUA pool of managers that they have available. He's the former manager at, in Rochester and he highlighted city and utility relationships and that, because that was really strong in Rochester. Rochester approves the, the city Rochester approves the budget and also establishes the rates. The SBU has been searching out land for a substation for the east and west side. A site was located on the east side. The property owner felt that the price that was stated was too low and at the meeting, the commission discussed the option for eminent domain. So it was decided at that point to put this on hold until after the referendum vote. The F, east and west substations appear on the SPU CIP at a total cost of an estimated $12 million-plus dollars. And this, which I, I think is a lot of money if we're not going to be having the Shakopee Public Utilities. And I spoke to Joe Adams and he said that that's a cost that's associated, connected to the ratepayers of Shakopee directly. The city, so last meeting, the city council, of the city council, we approved the RFQ at the last meeting and I would like to know what options for those substations are available by these other companies that will be doing their RFQ. I also asked the temporary utilities manager for information regarding the electric, the electric fund, to find out exactly what money is in there. He also indicated that these substations were included on the long-term plan that was done in 2018 and I've also asked for that long-term plan and that was a couple days ago and I still haven't received it. So I'm going to be bringing that to the commission if I don't receive it in the next couple days because I think this is important information for us to get. And also any policies that are asked by a commissioner like myself or even by a city to, to look at the funds or to look at the policies or to look at anything associated with the Shakopee Public Utilities should be open information and, and freely given over to, to whoever asks, asks for them, including the ratepayers. Right now, that is not accessible information and is not acceptable, acceptable for me as a commissioner, so I'll be pursuing that also. I think that's all I have on that issue. So I, I think that was all I have for my liaison report today.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments on this? I think as we move forward, it's important that all of us as a council put out factual information. I know that the city put out a fact sheet here. It's on our website, I believe. We may put out more. Let's stick to the facts. I think that's important. Let's try to be a, if nothing else, let's all try to be a champion of change because we don't want this and we don't want this in the future. And I think there, where there's change, there's opportunity. What that opportunity is, we'll be working on that over the next many, many months regardless of outcome. It's very important to our community and I feel pretty strongly about that. View it as an opportunity rather than a, oh, no, change moment. And let's stick to the facts. I think that's real important. Counselor Whiting, your liaison report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last, last meeting, I didn't have my notes from the MVTA. I do have them now. I wanted to mention that we did discuss the grant we got from the federal government for the Burnsville Bus Garage and how that might be used to upgrade that facility. And again, I wanted, a new one, I wanted to mention a new agreement, security agreement with Allied Security for the Marshall Road Transit Station. There were some concerns with the last security company, so we've upgraded that. And I think Counselor Lehman asked a while back about the reductions that in the MVTA budget and I did get some information back. They have reduced, decreased their budget to $848,000, mostly due to COVID and the reductions were in staff and utility costs and travel and training and some other service contracts that they did. So, you know, COVID has changed things on the, and we're working through that. That's all I have.
Counselor Whiting, thank you very much. To our administration report, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to touch a little bit on something that Commissioner Brennan had said in regards to her struggles as a sitting commissioner to get information from the utility. You know, there are those who doubt the necessity for change, some of which are on this council. And, you know, if a sitting commissioner who sits on the policy body can't get a copy of a policy, if a sitting commissioner on the oversight body can't get a return of her emails or phone calls when she's looking for information from the organization over which she is supposed to provide oversight, if a sitting commissioner of the governing body can't get answers to her questions and has essentially been ignored by the staff because the staff doesn't want to answer her, there can be no doubt for needed change. The staff do not appreciate the quote-unquote "commission," but rather choose what they want to do. It's what they've always done. It's the culture of the organization. This is exactly the problem. The commission structure doesn't work. It's a failure because there's no oversight. All a manager has to do is convince five people as to what they want to have happen, and it happens. The city council can't do anything about it. The council liaison can't do anything about it. The taxpayers can't do anything about it. There's answerable to no one. The commission doesn't act as a check on staff. Staff controls the commission. The commission is a shell. And frankly, as it operates today, it's a sham. There needs to be oversight. There needs to be accountability. There needs to be the ability of people when they ask for simple information to get it. Why do people hide things? People hide things because they have a reason to hide. This report has borne that out. This report is direct evidence of that culture, and it's not going to change until the organizational structure changes. Staff does not run the commission. Staff does not run the city. Both the city council and the commission have oversight responsibilities. And when they fail to do that, you get what you got in that report. That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. Any further comments? Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Reynolds brings up a great point. And it is, it is a failure of policy governance. And I'm not sure if the FOC ever actually initiated a policy governance type of model. But the general oversight that's lacking is always been a problem with that type of model. And I think, I think that is an issue. And there's just no way to control the funds and oversight of the budget. So I agree with Mr. Reynolds. And it is a concern. And I think the citizens should take a good look at it. It's a problem. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman, you have a lot to say on the internet. Do you have Counselor Lehman, I apologize. We can't hear you.
There we go. Sorry about that.
No, no, thank you.
Tonight is the first time I'm hearing about Counselor Brennan not being able to get policy information. So that's a new one to me. You know, I guess my initial concern back when I was liaison, well, probably before that, was really the outdated website and the customer service really was lacking. So it's good to see that they're at least focusing on that. But if there's issues in the overall governance, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to have to investigate that now that it's been brought up by Ms. Brennan. And, you know, does this new manager that's coming in, is this person going to be able to address some of these issues? I would, I would hope so. Time will tell. Is there time to tell? Don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
All right. You know, when we talk about building relationships, being a partner, I have a lot of unique experience on this as someone that has served our community for a long, long time in many capacities. And the relationship issue, which everybody says that should be an easy fix, it's been an issue for 25 years. It spans two different administrators, both at Spuck and at the city. It spans several finance directors at the utility and several here at the city. It goes through two different public works directors here at our city. And, and the staff at the utility that's been pretty, pretty the same over the same time. Also with, as far as long-term planning, they've, they've had basically one person in that position for a long time. We've had a couple planners. I've had opportunity to talk with all the past city staff people that I mentioned and the new ones. And I've also been on the other side of the equation with the utility, talk with the manager and their engineer that they have to improve. When I sat on that board, one of the goals was to improve the relationship with the city. I sat on that board for 10 years. There was no improvement. This isn't something that just came up. Well, now there's criminal activity just in the last four years. Some people say it's not criminal. Someone should apologize to the ratepayers because that's what happened. I think we all deserve better. And regardless of the outcome of the referendum, the current model isn't working. And we need a, we need to be a change champion for the betterment of our community and our residents. We don't need fear mongling. We don't need scare tactics of what may happen in the future. We need facts. And look at this as the opportunity point, right? There's a, it just, I see what's out there in public and it, I encourage everybody, do their homework, read this, read this. There'll be more out in the public. Stick to the facts. And let's try to move forward together in a positive way from that. Rather than what I saw in the last couple of days, just was, just beyond me. The internet is not full of facts. The real facts are out there at the proper locations. Go get them. And it's, this issue just didn't come up in the last 24 months. It's been going on for a long time. That's all I have to say for now. Any other business before this council? Jim, did you have a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor. I just thought I, you know, actually, I'm here.
Okay, I'm sorry. Counselor Lehman?
You're on mute.
Okay, you're on mute again, Matt.
Sorry. Motion to adjourn to October 6th at 7:00 PM.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote.
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Mayor Myers.
Aye. We stand adjourned at 8:56.
Aye.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.